Well, they came in and said it happened to them, so I mean, you know, they have a right to say that.
It's still here, Seth. They need to be filing a written complaint.
I think it starts with verbal and then goes to written, but it doesn't matter. We're communicating, so that's what matters. So I guess, um, you know, I guess my question was, you know, the complaints were that they weren't coming out and helping people so on, so on, so on.
Are they in chat?
Well, no, but I mean, you know...
I help all the people. I tell them, you know, people just to toot their horn they do, and I go, we all go running out.
Okay.
And some guys, some loads of heavy goes into the recycling, looks like cardboard. So one's out there trying to poke it down there, and the other guy's trying to do something else. I don't know who you're complaining about, you guys, two matics and...
Oh, I don't know. I really don't know. I don't know. But, um, you know, do you feel that you have enough helpers? The hours that they work is good and...
Yeah.
You know, because we're trying to do the budget too, so that's what we're juggling. We're juggling what you have and what you don't have. And, you know, we have different opinion on how much money to put in payroll for a budget, and we've kind of done it twice. Budget committee has an opinion, we have an opinion. Um, we're trying to make what's best for the town.
We got a nation out, and they all work good.
Oh, good, okay. And, you know, your two part timers are on, you know, they're eighteen hours, and then you have two more around twenty-seven hours, right? Or twenty, is it twenty-seven? It ends up being, yeah, three days, yeah. Good. Okay. I mean, I guess that's really all I... I mean, you guys have other questions up there? If you're comfortable with the hours that you have and the people that you have, then I'm okay. I mean, you know, on our next step. But I think you probably right, Royce, that people want to, you know, say that... The next point will just have them doing writing if they want to, so...
It's hard for me to be quite concerned. I mean, these other people are doing something else. My other two guys is too inside.
If they're too, we go out, and sometimes we go out to, like I'm saying, bar my men to stay outside, and this is so busy.
So, I mean, I guess, I mean, in the future, what I would really like to see, and I'll tell you this, I mean, I don't know if it will happen, but we'll see. I personally would like to see, like a shed right down below where the cars would stop, and they check the sticker, and then they check the car, and they say, "You go here, here, and here," and collect the money. That's really what I'd like to see in the future.
So you want another employee out?
Probably. In the future, not this year, but I mean, in the future. I mean, I would really like to see that.
I guess it'll be hard.
I know. Well, you know, I know. It's just...
I mean, some guy's down there, he's gonna hold up the traffic.
Yeah, it would happen. Yeah, probably would.
Sometimes Saturday's back all the way to gate, this way, both sides of the road.
Is it? Yeah.
You're gonna remember, on Saturday, we're open five hundred forty minutes, and we take...
That's funny that we say five hundred forty minutes.
Well, we are. I counted the cars before. Sometimes we have over five hundred, and I've seen five seventy-five. And I've seen few minutes that you did, nobody in the yard. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I know.
It comes in and...
A feast of famine.
When was the last time you made one of those calls, Royce?
Well, before I left.
Before, what do you mean, before you resigned?
Well, then, almost three years.
Okay.
And probably you're going out.
That's most likely, then, how you're going out.
Yeah, but I mean, that's fair. We're still open five hundred forty minutes.
Okay. Well, I guess that's really all I had. I mean, I just, you know, wanted to make sure that you were comfortable, that you felt like you had enough help and things were going okay.
I did have help.
So, good, good, good. That's really all I had. I mean, if these guys don't have anything else, quick, see? Quick and easy. Sorry to make you be down here. We talked to us. Tough as ever.
My time, especially, you know.
I know, I know. We appreciate it. Thank you.
You're good.
I'll try. Have a good night.
Excuse me just a second.
Tell this as I stand around. You do assign language?
Yeah, but I don't know what he's saying. I'm just thinking my...
Well, as long as he's got a fine thing, you know, okay.
Nine?
Nine.
Yeah.
May?
Oh, you're leaving at nine o'clock?
No.
Oh, it's got to give blood at nine o'clock, right?
Oh, you want a nine o'clock appointment? I'll make that for you. Yeah, absolutely. Thanks.
I wish I could go, but what, it's always, what time is that?
Uh, it's nine to two.
Yeah.
Uh, on Saturday, the eleventh.
Yeah.
Not good for you.
No.
You sound good, Chris. I'll give, I'll give both down.
I'm not good. There you go.
I would too, if they let me. I'm a half an inch too short. I'd give the doubles.
I couldn't go there anyways.
'Cause of sex?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I could go to bed right now and sleep. Not that I want.
That's not exactly what I was looking for, but we also have a form that I've seen, it said that it's a convert complaint form.
Oh, yeah, it's up front. That's one up front. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, that's what, they're supposed to fill out.
Well, that's fine, and I really just wanted to know if he was comfortable with the employees he had, if he felt that he needed more, because when we do with the budget, we need to know.
Oh, oh, sorry, I might just say, in the past, if people wanted to come in and just give a verbal complaint, it wasn't in their permanent, somebody's permanent work record. I mean, that's like if it's going...
I know, it's good to have communication.
Right. It doesn't have to be, it was, the complaints were minimal. They just had to be... Once you write it, it goes in somebody's work record, so... Or it's supposed to, anyway.
Royce, what you know?
He's over there.
Is he looking for us? He used to be up front on the wall, unless they don't get...
So we're gonna hear.
Was that front? Yeah.
Well, if we do a write, we should be, we should be having one of those filled out any time anybody's had a complaint against anybody in town yet.
I think people have a right to come and tell us and don't have to fill this out.
People also have a right to have a written complaint made out.
Excuse me, they have a right not to write it.
Right.
That's right.
But they can speak and have a communication. I mean, communication is important. I don't think there was anything wrong with what we did.
I do.
Okay.
Because what I was just saying is, when somebody writes a complaint, it has to go in somebody's permanent work record. And if it's just a little basic complaint that can be worked out by having a conversation, I don't think it has to...
How did you know that that's what that was before this discussion started? How do we know what it was?
What do you mean?
Well, the person came in here, they were, they seemed to be rather upset, and we were wrong. We should have made them make out a complaint.
Well, you should have, I think maybe you could have offered him...
Well, maybe you don't.
Maybe we should have offered it.
Maybe you could have offered him and told him that, like, if you think it's that big of a problem, then write it down if you want us to just handle it. You know, I mean, offer it to him, but I don't think that that little complaint should have gone in anybody's permanent work record.
Well, you don't have a selectman, so...
That's right. I'm a resident.
Okay.
Who votes for selectmen.
Yes. Are you here for budget committee?
I am.
Okay.
What's in here? Okay, several things. On behalf of the committee and myself also, we're having a problem with these, with some of these budgets. Um, the little ones that we've done so far have been fine. Example, the tax is incorrect on several. Code enforcement is wrong, highway is wrong. Uh, what was another one that was on? I can't even read my own writing. Sorry about that.
Payroll taxes?
Yeah, payroll tax.
Because he taxed, he averaged, he rounded it up to eight percent and not seven point something. Which he can put seven points up. I mean, I could have him change it to some, exactly what it's supposed to be.
They would request that you do that because they don't really want to pass it incorrect.
Yeah, that's right. Joya?
That'd be great.
You got a minute? Can you change the payroll taxes on the budget to exactly the same, what is it, seven point?
Thank you.
For all those accounts, thank you.
Thank you. And the other thing that they're having, that we're finding a problem with is things not in a category which are understandable to us. Oh, you're going to know when we're at the meeting. Uh, for an example, if you're going to the hardware store and you're buying a piece of hardware, it goes, it certainly would go in, probably supplies. It may be building supplies. It may be another type of supply. Toilet paper may not go in there. So there, people are getting like, what are they buying? And what does this mean? Is there any way to tag that?
We had POs for that purpose, but then the rules got changed on POs, so they don't have to report putting out anything anymore.
Well, no, I think that other...
No, that's, that's what you guys did.
Yeah, but I think what they're asking for is just more detail in that description.
Well, look at the more detail, because we can't tell.
That is, like, I agree with you. It's kind of hard that there's not, but you only have, like, half a line to write.
I did hear that.
Description. I only have, like, it's less characters than Twitter gives you. There's just not a lot of room to...
So if you put, well, it's a hardware, you don't have the room...
I don't write. And like, I know, another thing was on the highway, was like, I knew you guys wanted something with, like, plowing and like the route. But if I have to write, like, some people have, like, three trucks, so...
Can't do it.
If I have, like, Santa Clara truck, one, I can't write, like, what route he has with it, because there's only so much room for it.
Okay. The other thing would be possibly that, um, maybe more categories would help us.
More categories?
More categories, yeah. Supplies seem, what we see under supplies seems to be toilet paper in with screws and nuts and bolts.
Yeah.
And it's, that's really not the same thing. And that I heard, and Deborah's part of the board, so you can speak to her. What I heard is they're not gonna pass it unless they get some definite answers, is what they said. Is that correct?
Uh, what we would see, especially pertaining to the highway department budget, for example, under tree cutting, there's like everything underneath it except for tree cutting. I mean, there was signs, and there was hot top, and there was... And the other thing that people, including me, was having a problem with was the designation between Tommy as road commissioner and Tommy as a private contractor. There doesn't seem to be a designation between...
As far as, like, I don't know how there wouldn't be designation, because his, like, as a private contractor, that gets paid, it gets ten ninety-nine from the town, and then his salary is...
Yeah, but what we are seeing is, yeah, what we are seeing is, we just see Tom Torno, Tom Torno, and we're saying, like, you charged the town two hundred and eight dollars to go put cones out when a road got closed, and he goes, "Oh, that wasn't me. That was my truck," you know?
If this is on the expense report, that's him as a private, as, that's his job.
Yeah, and I understand that...
If it's under payroll, like, if his salary from the town is under payroll.
Right.
There's not really, like, a lot of ways to designate.
Yeah, I think unfortunately, though, and I just realized, is he uses his own social security number.
Right.
Which I kind of see as, it's a little bit of a problem. It might even be a tax problem for him. But he's using his social security number instead of being a business. So where, where is the insurance? And that's not you, honey. Um, the insurance part, if he's not a business, or if he's a business, is his sole proprietor, are his people actually covered?
Yeah, he has workers' composition insurance as well.
He does. Under this Tommy Torno trucking, or what is it?
It's under his, under his...
Just his name, okay. He does.
I mean, DVA to a business ass, which would be in your social security.
I think what they were looking for under that was like...
And so like, like, what they'll do is, like, some of them will apply for the, um, independent contractor status. And if they don't, if they do that, then they're like, they're driving their own trucks. You don't have to buy workers' composition insurance like yourself.
Right, you're driving your own truck.
Right.
But where Tommy has, somebody else driving his truck, he has workers' composition insurance that he purchases for himself, so...
I guess if you were telling me he was a DVA, but he was like, "No, I use my social security number," I was like, "Well, that means he's a little confused." Yeah, I was a little confused by that, but thank you for straightening that out.
Yeah, and I think what they were looking for is, like, if you did Thomas Torno as the road commissioner, or even if you did TT, as, you know, when you're doing his truck, you know, or if you had some kind of designation between the two.
That's his...
His truck.
Right, because he's not, his salary comes out of the payroll line, so if it says payroll, that's where his salary is.
Yeah, and so that, we were going, okay, actually trying to figure that out, but when it came down to that, uh, somebody going out and putting out road cones, so like, were we paying a one ton, however many dollars an hour to go and put out road cones, you know? So we paid somebody fifty something dollars an hour to go out and throw out a couple of cones onto the road when there was a road closure?
Well, if the truck has to go...
The truck has to go, it's the truck. It's going.
I said that.
Okay, interesting.
I mean, I, I think that that's what they're having a problem with, that some of these things, like paying fifty dollars to have cones to put out.
Right.
Trying to think of other ways that perhaps we could, we could cut some money by saving putting cones up, which is probably, I don't know, I mean, you need or what kind of a truck you need, but I think we'll do it. But just saying, could you save money in categories such as that?
You know, I think Tommy's supposed to commit a Stevie Anning at some point.
He is, he is, and I think he understands mostly. But if possible, if someone that could be, just go into some new categories, maybe just for next year even. So a few more categories, then he can read it better. That would be great. Yeah, yeah, that's what I think we're looking for, is more, more, um...
Accountability.
Accountability.
Thank you. Yes, absolutely, accountability. And where we're putting it, we'll make that accountable. What, what was said, and I believe I have the language, they feel that it's a deep, dark hole.
Big sinkhole is what that's...
But they don't know what's in it. And unfortunately, um, they're saying that they are not gonna pass it unless it gets straightened out. That's what I'm, so I just, no, you, I didn't say I was voting one way or the other. I'm just saying, that's what I was told by my...
The one that they felt, there were two that they felt were the worst.
What's the purpose of your committee?
To, to, why trouble the budget? To make sure it's right. I know what my purpose of my committee is. Yes, thank you, I do.
No, I'm asking because it's all written out here. That, there's quite a few things here that are under the powers and duties of your committee.
Hi, we, we couldn't meet with you. I figured it was easier for me to come in, and John was gonna come in, you know, John, that's one of the problems.
He's busy.
Worried about this. Um, that we meet with you. We try to come to a reckoning. So while we're, while we're asking right now, is if we could straighten it out, we'll go over it again and see if we can agree. And if we don't agree, we can come up with a number, put our own recommendation.
I believe that's what's outlined.
Christine, the two that they felt were the worst.
And your powers and duties, it's very clearly outlined.
Yeah, it is. It very much is.
Betty?
Yes.
The two that we, that we as a committee felt were the worst were the ditching, because there was no ditching wear, and the tree cutting, which seemed to have everything, everything just thrown in it.
The thing, you can't put it in, though. You can't put ditching on some...
Right, I only have so much room in it. And so there's more explanation usually on their, their timesheet.
I guess that's what we probably, if we have questions, we may have to dig deeper and go look at just either the timesheet of where they were, or...
That is fine, because every kind, like, it shows a date on that thing, so I have every date, like, I have a folder for it.
So you can tell?
Yeah, exactly.
Excuse me?
I don't know. I know, I know. There's no rule, there's no rule. I don't...
Betty, could I just make a suggestion? So if it's under the ditching category, it would supposedly be ditching, right? So under the ditching category, every line item doesn't have to say ditching on river road, ditching on there. If it's under the ditching category and you just wrote river road or center road, you should have enough space to just write that.
And like I said, I'll talk to Tommy about it because he, so...
That's a good point.
Right.
Well, like I said, I'll talk to Tommy about it. I'll try to get contact with him this week.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. The other thing we found was really confusing was that it shows Tommy being paid for something when it's actually his...
We went over it.
Yeah, we went over it, and then...
We did go, we, we kind of got over that, yes, yeah. Rebecca has a few things that she has in writing, and I don't have my paper, so...
Okay, I thought it would be helpful if you had the draft of the minutes for the last budget committee meeting, which has the conversation we had about the road commission and the road budget. And it has our concerns written right in it, and what's on the wrong line, what doesn't have enough information and that sort of thing. So it's just a draft. It has not been approved yet.
By us, but we think it'd be helpful, maybe be helpful for you people to...
Is it in a specific spot here, or do I need to read the whole?
Um, when, when you get to...
Highway?
Yeah, it's highway. It should say highway budget.
And I still think we're out of order discussing this this way.
We're not questioning his duties. We're questioning the budget, which is our job.
Why are we out of order?
Because, because he, he found a clause that says we can't speak about anybody's job performance, which I don't think we are at all.
There's also a lot of other clauses there, and that's why I wonder, why I ask if you, if you guys have read through your bylaws.
We did.
We did.
Why didn't, you haven't yet specifically told anybody what fault you find in us looking at the budget, so...
Well, it looks to me like we have, trying to have a selectman's, a selectman's meeting and a budget committee meeting all in one.
They're on the agenda.
And I think that's, that's the way this thing is set up to be done.
Betty is on the agenda.
I am.
Of our budget committee to ask those questions.
I understand that.
And I don't think there's any one way to ask those questions, of course.
And we do have...
And they can make recommendations.
Do you have a comment from, from us, citizen?
Yes, Ben.
You don't have a quorum of the budget committee sitting here anyway, right now?
So...
But we do have a slide quorum.
But you have to realize that...
But you don't have a budget committee sitting here at my point.
No, you don't.
Right, so it's not a meeting.
I just offered my other people to remind me, to help me remember everything.
There's a lot to remember.
Because I was, well, I was gone all day, and I can't even read my own writing, so... Um, the other thing that I, that I wanted to say is now, at a meeting, we have two budget, we have two selectmen sitting there, and we get no answers.
Right.
So how's that any different than us sitting here? I'm just not trying to argue with you, Royce, but I'm saying you, you, and nothing personal, sit in our meeting, we ask you...
If you prefer, I'll stand out. I won't come to the joint meetings.
We ask you for a question, we ask you a question and perhaps a decision. And there's a quorum. Two of you is a quorum. You will not make one. So unless there's all of you there, it doesn't sound like we're gonna get an answer. Am I, am I correct?
Right, and I think we're being very...
It might depend on the question that you're asking too, and how you're asking it. We're all compelled, we're all compelled by certain laws here with these meetings.
Well, we have a list.
If we start getting into personal, personal stuff...
Nobody has ever spoke, we have, it's all on video. Nobody's ever personally attacked anybody in either of these meetings, Royce. No.
If anything, I think I...
Because just now, I heard a road commissioner being named by names through a whole discussion of things here, so...
Can I just have one of these?
Is that what I do?
Thank you, yeah. Thank you, Christine. That's, that will be fine.
Is that helpful, Christine?
Yes, yeah.
Good.
I thought it would be.
Yeah, now that you were, we're guys all copies too, and that way we can all read it and see what you guys...
And then perhaps we could have a joint meeting after you're able to read that, and if there's anything else, we can send it over to you so you're, you're better prepared yourself. We, I just felt that I wanted to come in here because I wasn't getting to...
And I sent out an email today to Sue, who has the list of questions that the budget committee has come up with.
Don't come near me. I've done some...
I'm just sitting way back.
I emailed you a list of questions that the budget committee has questions about, and that, so that, you know, you respectfully, we're not ganging up on you. We're trying to give you a heads up that this is a concern and that we would love an answer.
Yeah, and that, you know, your recommendations, your ideas are, you know, communication's important, so...
Yeah, Royce. You two like clapping, Royce?
Yeah.
I think, I think that I've tried very hard, excuse me, and maybe too hard, and I've, I've had to think about this, to try and help people through their budgets, because I don't like to pick, feel that anyone, anyone to feel like they're picked on. So I've tried really hard to kind of be that middle person who goes both ways. But after having gone through this, I have to tell you that I think that some of it, in reality, I have to start to look at other things and say, is this what the, what's best for the taxpayers? And that's why I am here, because I, I don't see things going as well as they should for the benefit of the taxpayers. I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you. Becky, did you want to answer?
Well, just under, under supplies, I found them scattered all throughout the budget. And if he could, under supplies, list office supplies, safety supplies, brush cutting supplies, and, and sort them out so that all the supplies are in one place, because we really can't tell what the, what the cost of supplies is. And the payroll also was scattered throughout the budget instead of just being on the payroll line. So those, those were very confusing to us. It was hard to get a handle on what was actually happening.
Until you're around for a number of years, it's hard to tell what some of this stuff actually is. You know, I mean, like, even the transfer station, what, what is what? There's names for things that everyone, common person doesn't know.
There's boots in four different categories.
And that, and the explanation that they give us oftentimes is just good enough. We get it. We know what it is now. But sometimes we still think that it should be brought to, to us...
Maybe, maybe next year, uh, you could give them a, a paper, and you guys divide what you want.
That's not our job.
And just fill the holes.
No, that's...
That's a good suggestion, you know?
No, Betty, that, that's not our job. That's between the treasurer and the...
I know.
If they would like somehow...
Maybe we could offer suggestions.
Right, suggestions.
Yeah, we could offer a help from our perspective to help the, the selectmen in their perspective. I think that's working together, I think.
I think that's what we're trying to do right now.
Yeah. It's a good idea that we, we write it down, we, hey, we say, "Hey, you know, that's a bad idea."
And I attended one budget, and one selectman's meeting where our names, you knew her voice here, asking you to use the budget committee as a resource. And that's what we're trying to be, is a resource to the selectmen.
Well, and to the voters. I mean, I, I think that that was a common theme at the budget committee the other night, is that we can't confidently stand up and recommend a budget that we're not understanding because it's not put together properly.
Yeah, that, that's very, very true.
Yeah.
And crazy little things, um, come in, like, uh, the mowing, once I get paid for this, and, you know? You know, you're gonna look at that, I'm sure. It's strange and things like that, we just don't understand. And sometimes, it's been going on for years and nobody even thinks about it. That's what we're talking about.
And it absolutely is not personal. Our job is to just be a good steward of the town's money and to make sure it's being spent correctly, as you are.
Yes, absolutely.
We're supposed to be helping you out.
I think we're so. Me, we're okay? Okay, I'm gonna stay, Betty.
Okay.
No comment.
So, I got a couple other things. I've got this, um, letter today. I can run it. Um... I'm just gonna read it. I'm gonna decide it here, so... Uh, says, "Go to selectmen to the town eleven, blah, blah. Dear board selectmen, please accept this letter as a notice of my resignation from my position of selectman's assistant, administrative assistant, with my last day of work being Friday, February twenty-four, two thousand seventeen. I appreciate the opportunity and the experience I've gained working in this position for the past eleven years, but I feel that it is time to retire and pursue other interests. During the next three weeks, I am willing to help in any way to make the transition as smooth as possible. Again, I have enjoyed my time working for the town eleven and sincerely, Susan Collins."
Ouch.
Yeah, so, um... We have to, um, I guess I make a motion that we accept her letter of resignation. Give me a second.
Second with regrets. You've been pulling something right off, right?
Yeah. All favor?
Yeah, no.
She's retiring.
I just want a chance to go.
So I think that I'll probably hop into tomorrow morning and have her dig out, um, her job description, so that way you guys can review it. We'll all review it, and by next week, we'll get it posted. How's that sound?
We should get it posted, wouldn't it?
Well, if we can, after, I mean, I'll review it tomorrow morning, so you guys review it, and, you know, I know she has one. So we'll look at it and see if we, you know, we want to make any changes and whatever, and we'll meet again and see, and we'll get it posted as soon as we can, because we can, you know, that's a process. So, and a really time crunch time, because it's, 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 um, budget time, it's election time, it's town report time. Um, it is all that stuff that needs to get done, so, um... So she left me some other stuff, though, and then I did. I knew she'd retire soon, I just was hoping it wasn't gonna be that soon, but, let's see. She left a minute to ask him to do a lot. She left a minute to post the menu, what's?
Did we have an abatement that was supposed to come up to the board?
We're working on it.
Just, did we have one already?
No, I'm working on it right now, it's a funny, before we walk out of here. No, no, I just flew back from Waterboro, I'm just going behind it.
Bye. Did we have one of those one of yours there?
Yeah.
I'm gonna pack it up.
Put it down to the monitor.
Susan, that's for the joint meeting.
That one kind of, that one not yet. Not yet, not yet, not yet, not yet. That one kind of. No, no. And that one, a little bit. They asked you to put it back down to 7.65 instead of eight.
This is the letter from the gentleman, but I think that Deb knew about, that just moved here that wants to come and talk to us about our cameras, I think that's a good idea. I can have Sue contact about one of the times coming in, if that's okay.
Yeah, Mr. Gould.
The one we talked to about Raffo Lee.
He was pretty instrumental in helping over getting Berwick's set up and he's just moved to...
Dear Gould, correct, yeah.
Yes, yeah, and he, so he was instrumental on getting theirs set up, so he's pretty good with like, you know, where the cameras should be placed and finding quality equipment for a lesser price and instead of buying just from MetraCast's contractor and...
Do you want Paul, your own page, the second of the time, to talk to this gentleman? Have him kind of give us an idea of what the cameras too in here? I think the more people we talk to, that's that gentleman that Deb, no, it's Morrells Hill that just moved here to set some others up, so...
Yeah, just so, just so you guys, I don't know him, know him, I've just spoken with him through my page and he was, he had seen the video and was interested in helping.
Let's not see that lady with the sculpture.
Oh, good.
She said, "Okay."
For the town report?
Yeah.
For the front page?
Well, if everybody wants it.
It's awesome.
I think it's awesome.
I think it would make a nice front page, my town report, a picture of the sculpture.
That, and you got a little thing, maybe we ought to have a picture of the new Dollar General down there. Really? Your first major retail store in town.
Oh, no, not their major.
We got another meeting going on down there on that end of the table?
Maybe. It's on video, watch it on YouTube.
Let's just watch, bro.
His appointment paper for someone to join the planning board, so we probably need to meet that person, Sarah O'Brien, like to join the planning board, so we'll have to set up a time.
She's currently...
She's already on?
An alternate.
She is, an alternate?
Just being moved up to...
Or being made to join the board.
She's had another meeting the other night, didn't she?
Yeah, she's been to two meetings, just like I have, she's an alternate currently, but just being moved up.
Oh, so she's there already? She just needs to have the appointment, okay?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Because I don't know where she is. So, she's there or she's just moving up to her position. Today is the sixth, isn't it? I think my medicine's kicking in, sorry, you might have to wait me that. All right, we're done. This is for me. This is just the stuff she's given to me. This is for us too, right, Ben?
Yes, it is.
All right, that's on that. This one.
I hate to be a pain, but can pull that towards you.
Why change now?
No, where's my pipe? Ah, perfect, thank you.
Oh, this one just needed a different face, didn't it? This is still in my box for some reason.
Betty, could you leave that or that?
My eyes were different than it a year ago.
It's a good one, do we have to change something with that? We must have. Is that running down with you?
A good one, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, it just needed a new front page or is it just... Because we signed it once, what, did we just miss this front page?
Yep, no, I had made a mistake on this, so in my haste to get it to the last meeting, I had done the residual value instead of what was actually abated. We cut it up the other way and...
Good.
Yeah.
So, we just have to sign it again and... Yeah, the other one's void, really, perfect, okay. Okay, so I think it's just, okay, yeah. Oh, God, my stuffy. Oh, no.
Just breathe that way.
Just let her just breathe.
Yeah.
One more interesting.
Is that one? Do you want this one back too? Was it her, Ben? You want me to leave for so?
Leave.
Red Lobster's Lobster Festival, not eating lobster.
Good to know.
Sorry.
Usually our phone, not mine. Are you going to do any budgets today, Christine?
Well, I think we should try to look at, maybe go through some of the ones or whatever. Jordan's here, we have more time, it would be easier for us to sit down and all...
Are the department heads coming in?
Yeah.
Are the department heads?
No, there are budgets, there is no department heads.
Oh, all right. In that case, guess we don't need them.
Yeah, we'd like to get started on general government too because that's, we only got another month until that stuff has to be ready.
What is the town report, Dick?
I don't know, but it's gonna be ready for March in order to get done on the ballot.
It's gonna be signed by you guys on the back end.
Oh, there's this one, is there three on here?
Royce, the answer to your question is that we've got to have it ready, the Budget Committee has to have things ready by March in order to get it on the ballot.
Right, I was just wondering, we have a sheet around here, somewhere.
Yeah, there was a sheet, I think it was March, March 13th or March 14th or something like that.
There's a change on that sheet too.
Oh, wondrous.
Yeah, well, today.
What's the change?
March 27th, the nomination papers have to do back.
Right.
I think it was written down as, what, the 24th before, yeah, so you have an extra three days there.
Yeah, but that's for nomination papers, right?
Right.
I mean, I would imagine...
Somebody wants to run, they probably would, like, you know, want to have it in.
When do I have to have it in, Mike?
You may find out some with town clerk, ma'am. Or I'll pass this paper down, you can take a look at it. Hey, you know what, we gotta go make some copies of it so everybody can have it.
Our stuff should be in by the 9th, I think, with the final ordinance draft.
We set a target date at the meeting, the last meeting of March 13th to have all the budgets done for you. If we can.
If we're gonna rewrite any of them.
Right. Well, we can't rewrite them, they have to rewrite them and get them back to us, so if something comes to us, I'm not...
We're gonna make a different...
Right.
We can make a different budget and put it in, we have to get that done and word it correctly too.
Right.
If they so choose to do that, which...
My granddaughter's got a new camera, I'll have her take pictures of that. And if you don't like it, get somebody else.
Yeah, have her take some.
Do you know who did it?
There's a lot of, do you know who did it, Paul, because we'll need to know that.
She's gonna send us the woman's name so we can put...
All that together.
Oh, nice.
Beautiful.
I know, it is beautiful.
Every time I drive by with my grandchildren, I have to stop and let them look at all the animals.
We may have to put two or three pictures on the front to get the whole thing, you know, have her do it.
I'll have her take a whole bunch of that.
Yeah, we can put them off there so they can see the whole thing, you know, you don't want to...
Yeah, like a little collage.
Take that fence down, we'd be all sad.
Great, she here if you have a...
Is Mike supposed to come in and see you guys, right? Maybe she comes in.
Yes, an executive session, I haven't called yet, he would like to, it's not on the agenda, but he wants to have that as a session.
Because he asked me to just come in with him and I was just thinking...
Yeah, well, that's what it is. And that is not on, that will not, he just asked us today, Mike, and we'll go into that in a few minutes, but he asked me for an executive session for personnel matters, so we'll do that in a little bit, so...
He actually called me, he's certainly... Did you receive paperwork from Ron, I think it's Turgeon?
From an I A.
Yeah, Mike. Yeah, what, two PDF files and stuff and a change in how much money each town really needs to...
Yes.
You did get it, okay, good.
The psych, I've already got corrected copies, so if you guys want these.
Are you going, Christine, are you going to discuss that?
Yes.
You can bring them to the...
Christine, are you going to discuss that information from Mr. Turgeon and how much?
Today?
Yes.
No, I wasn't planning on it today, no. We gotta try to get through some small budgets after we go through the executive session that Mike asked for and then, well, we'll get through our executive session, then we're gonna go into the workshop so we can go over some small budgets and one articles and get, you know, go through what we need to really look at and see where we're at and go from there and what we want to do, so...
Are we about ready for mine?
Yeah. Oh, let me make a motion we go to executive session.
Second.
You didn't even hear what the reason was and you're second and running out the door. Is it 4056A?
4056A.
And, and, 10 minutes till four?
Where does that flygo out that the town's sending out?
3:50.
That's why I was asking.